Meeting to order? You have the agenda for anything?
Yep, I'll just join this Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I don't know if you wanted to read the protocol.
Yeah, I looking at the crowd, they're all veterans, so for purposes of the record, I'll just read the remote meeting statement and bypass all the directions. The city has determined it is not practical or prudent to conduct an in-person city council meeting due to the local state of emergency and social distancing guidelines. Accordingly, this meeting will be an electronic meeting and conducted under Minnesota State Statute, section thirteen D zero two one, to the extent practical. Members of the public may attend the meeting by utilizing the published link and call-in information.
All right, so with that, the meeting is called the order, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, just under consent agenda, I would like to note that under item D five D, the motion that the council would be approving would be to authorize the mayor and the city administrator for signatures on the purchase agreement, the city attorney has advised us that it will require both their signatures.
So do we, do we need to amend the agenda then?
Um, yes, please.
Okay, do we need to move into general business, or?
No, I think you can approve it with that change to consent agenda.
Motion to approve agenda with that minor tweak as stated.
I'll second that.
Motion by Berg, second by Steve Fersad. Amanda, you vote first.
Aye.
Josh.
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Vote aye as well. Agenda passes. Agenda is approved, I should say. Okay. Excuse me, sorry. Public comment, is there anyone that's on that would like to speak for, speak under public comment? Going on? And twice? All right, we'll close public comment. On the consent agenda, so there was that slight tweak to item D, anyone have any other changes or items they may want to pull or ask questions about? Any motions?
Tom? Consent agenda, oh, whoops.
I was just supposed to remind Tom that item number D in the staff report, it states that the purchase agreement is to be signed by the city administrator, but the mayor and the city administrator need to sign it, so just that one minor change.
So we would be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as so amended.
Whoops.
Motion by Don?
John, don't. Second, Novak.
Second by Amanda. Josh, you want to vote first?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Vote aye as well, consent agenda passes. We do not have any public hearings, so we'll go into general business.
There are two items. Under general business tonight, the first one is an annual premise gambling permits. There are two resolutions, we have two organizations basically which hold premises within the city. The Fire Relief Association has pulled tabs with Captain Black's bar and grill, the Double Way Firehouse Grill in Leo's. I see that council member, Tim Rehm, is not here, otherwise she would need to abstain because she is one of the premises. And then we would need a separate motion for resolution twenty seventy-one, which would approve the premise for Elko Baseball Club for the end zone in Bullseye.
Motion to approve resolution twenty dash seventy.
Second, Amanda.
Motion by Berg, second by Novak. Don?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Josh?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Got it, resolution passes. Then you need a separate motion for twenty dash seven one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
To a motion to approve resolution twenty seventy-one?
Motion by Novak, second by Berg, Amanda? Or, yeah, Amanda, you get to vote. All right. I'll vote aye as well, Don?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Got it, that motion passes as well.
Our next item under general business. Mayor members of council is an outdoor and concert event permit for the Chamber of Commerce Christmas tree lighting, this is an annual event. They have changed up the format this year to make it a drive-by event, it still does meet the criteria for requiring an outdoor event permit. Council will note from the memo that the chamber did not meet the normal application timelines, nor did they meet the timelines for us to get out a notice under the timeframe generally required by city ordinance. City code does allow for an exception for good cause, and the council is being asked to waive that minimum notification timeline to neighboring properties as part of the approval.
Motion to approve resolution twenty dash seventy-two.
Second.
Motion by Berg, the second by?
Amanda.
Who was that? Second by Amanda. I'll vote. Aye. Don?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
That passes as well. On the reports.
We have our usual item under reports, which is council meeting format. As with the last meeting, there really haven't been any changes with regards to state guidance, closures, CDC recommendations, et cetera. So at this point, staff would suggest to the council that we continue to hold our public meetings in the same format.
No objections.
Okay. The next item is, we are simply looking for a council member to sit on the interview panel for the planning commissioner candidates to make a recommendation to the city council, we would anticipate that those interviews would take place in early January.
So, Don, you would be excluded.
Yeah.
No offense.
That's fine.
Love to have you still.
That hurt.
So, me, Josh, Amanda, or Kate? I think Kate's done this before, or Josh, was it, you've done it before, hasn't you?
I don't know if I've done this one before, I've done the police one once, but no, I don't think I've done anything for any of the commissions.
Kate did commissioners last time around. I don't think Josh has done it, or Amanda has not done it, either.
Josh, Amanda, do either of you have an interest, otherwise I can do it as well?
No, I'm happy to.
You want to do it?
Sure.
Amanda, you okay with that?
I guess.
Wow.
I have the union negotiations now, so. That going on right now, I'll let Josh.
All right. All right, it's all yours, Josh. All right.
Remaining item under administration is the final draft budget for twenty twenty-one and projected budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. We provided the updated documents based on the feedback and direction we received at the last council meeting. I don't plan on providing any sort of a presentation, you receive the materials. Simply looking for any further direction, otherwise the documents as they would be presented or as they've been presented with any further direction from council would essentially be placed on the consent agenda for the council meeting on this twenty, on the seventeenth for adoption.
The only, I'll bring it up one last time before y'all tell me to go away, but I think I still believe strongly we can hold off on hiring another police officer. I don't know if anyone cares at this point to hear my arguments, since I brought this up a number of times, but.
Not really, Joe, but.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Hey, I'll indulge you, I wasn't at the last one.
Oh, it's true, you weren't, well, I, basically, if we, we start the process, if we hold off and we start the process in July, we're, we're gonna, we could prepare to have an officer starting January first of the following year. And we wouldn't have the budget for it next year, and we're already, we already pushed that position back a little bit. We're talking about pushing it back another, you know, handful of months, which is going to have a significant impact on our budget and allows to reduce expenses, and I hate to use this. I mean, there's been two probably record low call months this, this year. It's on the reporter, we'll go over it later from Brady, and, you know, I hate kind of using this almost as, almost against Brady, but he's just presenting the facts, and I just, I don't see, I'm really having a tough time seeing where there's that strong demand that we need to, we need to fill that officer position in twenty twenty-one, I don't see why it can't wait till twenty twenty-two, especially since by the time we start the process, it could almost be twenty twenty-two anyway before we have some. So that's what I got.
I'm certainly open to it, I mean, and I guess I wonder to, and maybe I'm overthinking it as well, but, you know, would in, we don't have a crystal ball on what pools or whatever of applicants are going to be, but even further, further away from everything, I just, I wonder, well, maybe it gets worse, I don't know, but no, I mean, I, I hear exactly what you're saying as far as the, the actual need, like and is six months going to have that big of an impact on our ability to deliver the services and they, and meet the expectations of the community, and Brady, that's where you feel free to push back and, and whatever if, if I'm not thinking through that clearly, but, I mean, we, we have continued over the, I don't know, three, four years to push pretty hard to fill this up and, and get closer to that twenty-four-seven coverage, but, you know, if there's ways to reduce spending, if even only for a tempered, temporary period of time with everything else we got going on, especially COVID and not knowing what the impact of everything's going to be, I'm definitely open to, to it as well.
Was that an invite to a comment, Josh?
Maybe, sure, absolutely.
A couple of things to the mayor's point. One, if you have a January one start, or excuse me, July first start, that person will start July first. Had the officers started January first, we were going to start two or three months ago to hire that person. So that, there is no cost to that hiring process, we don't pay overtime, we don't do anything, staff time is normal time. So we would have somebody to start July first, so that's one pushback. We wouldn't start hiring then, that's when that person would start, we'd actually start looking at the end of January posting, and we'd have him ready to, have him or her ready to go by then. The other thing I would like the entire council to try to grasp here is you guys have been doing a wonderful job at development and fostering that, and I want to say two things that are gonna really make a big difference in this community, virtually overnight is QuickTrip and I thirty-five. And with QuickTrip coming online probably at the end of twenty twenty-one, those are immediate call generators. And I thirty-five, and to remind you, I know it's been a long time since you guys have seen my workload study, but we are already down from the workload, two and a half full-time, FTEs, full-time people, and at two and a half is when we try to get somebody. If we do that workload study in July, we're going to be looking at three, three and a half full-time people down. And my push for community value policing, I'm fearful if we do wait that six months, you have to remember too, there is three months of training once they get hired before they're on their own. So you're really pushing it back to twenty-two, the summer of twenty twenty-two. So there's a couple of things to consider there from what you said, Mayor, and I just do not want to be behind when things would pop off as far as development and call load.
Thanks, Brady. Tom? You're muted, Tom.
Just to assist the, the chief, the primary reason at this point in time, we do have the potential for recent call load associated with development, but at this point in time, the primary purpose for adding the position is coverage, which therefore results in response times. Even though we technically can schedule for full-time coverage, we have gaps due to vacation, sickness, training, or other duties that may require somebody to be off the street at any particular point in time, which means reduced patrol, some, or coverage from the county, and there's a dramatic difference in response times. Also, increasing level of duties that are keeping that pole, the chief off the street, which does reduce his ability to do community art, did policing and provide on the street presence at times during the day during the week, this would help resolve both of those issues, so even though we have seen a reduction in calls this year, I would presume related to COVID and people basically staying home, et cetera, the, a, a big driver for this is moving towards a more twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five coverage of having somebody on the street as much of the time as we can.
So, Josh, go ahead.
I was going to say Brady had me at, can I comment, or whatever that question was, I, I, I just missed the debate, I missed you guys, I'm totally cool with moving forward with the police officer July one.
All right, I, I, I'm gonna I know, I know I'm fighting a losing argument here, and Brady, it's not, I, I know you don't take my argument as personal, but, because it's not that way, but you know, first of all, you mentioned the QuickTrip and the development, and I don't know, maybe we'll get to a little bit later in reports, but it's making me a little nervous about where we're at with the QuickTrip and the fact that we haven't seen anything. All we've heard for months now is that they're talking about use sense, and there's not really a maturity necessarily. And that's starting to concern me that this is really going to be the twenty twenty-one project. Which if that's the case, then we're talking about that, that additional need for police coverage into twenty twenty-two anyway. Second of all, any development that would happen really wouldn't come online till the end of twenty twenty-two, so either, or to the end of twenty twenty-one, the way things are going, I, I don't know that residential development is really going to have a, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe you just tell me I'm an idiot, Brady, that's fine, but I don't know that residential, I don't know that the residential development is going to cause that much of an increase call volume, while I, I'll concede that the, I think police resources will be stretched a little bit. I think there's certain limits to how far I want to go spending until we see some more development actually happening, and I guess that's just where I'm at. The rest of the council disagrees with me, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I do, I do respect that, and I told you when you hired me, I'm not a doom and gloom chief, and there's going to be, you know, people running up and down the street with flamethrowers and guns if we don't hire this, this officer, but it will set us, and, you know, up until a few months ago, we were counting on that officer to start in January, and that's when we would have liked it to keep everything ahead of the curve, if you will. And my biggest concern is that if we don't hire till January one of twenty-two, we're going to be pushed behind the curve, and what you're going to see is if we can hire that day, then they're not coming online until spring of twenty twenty-two, and then if we're really behind and we need another officer or these developments, I, you know, there's a lot in the pipeline, there's a sixty-nine unit affordable housing that we're looking at putting online, maybe next year. QuickTrips, the, the housing, and the housing actually really does cause a lot of call load even before the people move in, is because of the construction. Construction theft is one of the biggest crimes right now, and it takes a lot of resources to patrol those adequately and to try to keep those sites safe while they're being built, so there is an, an actual decent amount of call out for that. That's at night and the day, because the crime happens at night, but it's reported during the day when they show up in the morning, so as watching my previous organization go through that, they're call generators, but I refuse to go doom and gloom. People will be fine if we don't hire, but it, it really is going to push, push us back and get us behind the curve, and I just, it's so hard to catch up once you're behind, so that's, you know, I do think we need it, I do think we need the July first start of twenty-one, but you're right, we, I'll never say, you know, we're going to suffer as citizens because of it.
I appreciate that, Brady. I, if someone else has anything to say, I'll speak up, otherwise we'll just, we'll move on, because I know we're at, I know we got three, three supporters at least, so. All right. Well, we can move on, I think we're good with hiring the officer when we, when we are planned for mid-year.
Okay, so we'll be bringing back the twenty twenty-one budget for adoption at the meeting on the seventeenth. It'll reflect the assumptions we just talked about, plus any other tweaks that might come up between now and then based on new information. One of the things I did want to reinforce that was in the memo is that we'll be assuming the twenty 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 fee schedule with regards to utility fees, because we have not completed our utility fee analysis, so after, if we make changes, we'll amend the budget accordingly. So, if there's no other questions?
I think we can move forward. Public works.
Um, just a couple things, we picked up the first new plow truck today. So we got back a little after four today. That's what, was it two hundred and thirty thousand dollars looks like? We will pick up the next one, the second one will be done next week, so we should have both of them before any cold storms. Which is good, the weather's been great, saving a ton on not using any salt in basically November or hopefully December. So, weather stays decent for now, and then the rain at Rowena is, they're working on the boards now, I would think they'll be done probably sometime mid-next week. But once temperatures get cold enough, we'll start making ice, but it'll still be a few weeks. But that's all I got, but I'm here for any questions.
Anyone have any questions? You guys do great work.
Thank you.
All right, we've.
So as Joe alluded to, we did have a very slow month. Part of that is due to the incredibly good weather, road conditions, we haven't had a ton of bad snowy, crashy type weather. We've had full complement due to everybody's vacations being canceled, so we have had twenty-four hour coverage virtually for that month. And I'll equate a lot of the, one thing I'll point out, the lack of car prowls and break-ins from vehicles is that coverage at night, we have patrol officers out there watching our neighborhoods just ten hours at night, and that, so I think that contributes to the low calls, our people aren't having to call in the morning to report their vehicles being broken into or things being stolen, so I think that helps a ton. The more proactive we can keep our officers, the better off they, you know, we will be as citizens, but it is, it is a slow, we're going into our traditionally slow time of the year, which is winter, go ahead, Joe.
I was just, I was curious, and I, I'm just not on social media as much as maybe I ought to be, but do you push that information out via Facebook or anything that you're having increased coverage, or is that something that you? I, because that's, that's one of those things that really gets neighborhoods fired up when you have these rash of car breaks and break-ins, and this would be a nice kind of brag for the police department.
It would be a brag, I, I don't believe in putting it out there, if it's, I can't prove if it's luck or my officers. I've said that before when I'm doing my workload study, I, I can show you what has been reported, but I cannot prove what crime we have prevented. And, you know, this is our first, you know, next year, January first, it'll be our first year where we've had, since I've been here, when we've been full staff, full coverage for a year. Brenton started on his own, I believe, in May, so we've had a long cycle of this full coverage, and I think you're seeing that a little bit in the lack of calls. But it's also, you throw in that evil, what's it, five-letter word, COVID in, and we don't know the effect of that, that could really be keeping people in, we saw the effects of it in March, where it virtually ground down everything, and it's starting to do that a little bit more. And another thing, you close, not that our bars are wild and crazy bars at all, they don't generate a ton of calls, but there's, the ripple effect from those sometimes of people coming home when they're out drinking. So that's been closed down, that could have an effect, I'd like to say it's all us, but I can't prove it, but I do know it helps. So the call load was down, we're continuing to settle into the new police department. I know most, if not all of you have been through to check it out. We're getting some things still fixed and aligned and, and moving into it and trying to find a natural workflow of the building, but it's been great so far, so other than that, I'm open for questions, I kind of talked more than I should have at the earlier part about the officer, so.
I don't know, anyone have any questions? I know I ran into Don doing the tour of the police department, if you haven't been over there, it's I don't know, if you've walked through the old P P, which I think we all have, it's, I don't know, it's worth, it feels like we have a police department.
It's awesome, I was proud to walk through there and see that, to be honest.
You know, I've had a couple from deputies and people who worked in the old one with us, and they walk over into the new one, and they're like, I don't understand, where's the drug smell and the and it smells nice in here, and I greatly appreciate it, so.
I'm, I'm just curious, you guys, Chief Mortensen, I don't know if he's back, been back in town, but it would be cool if he stopped and to see.
He has.
I've been, I've been communicating with Chief Mortensen, and he has not been back in town to my knowledge, but we've been trying to set up a video tour of the, sometime we can do a video tour of the facility.
And the. Cool, I know you've, they fought for years for that.
I know, and the officers have been sending him pictures as they've been moving in and everything, so I know he's seen it, and I don't know if they've shared video, but yeah, I'd love to livestream with him and so he can see it, and when he does come back, he for sure has to have a tour.
For sure.
We're very proud, grateful.
Uh, no fire updates, I'm assuming?
Nope.
Uh, engineering, we have, we have Rich on, don't we?
I'm here.
You're, you're here.
I, I have no report, but I'd love to get some questions.
I have questions, does anybody else have questions?
Go ahead with your, Joe.
Uh, the first question, I wanted to follow up. I I know I had sent a couple of emails regarding a resident who was interested in exploring a crosswalk along to. And unless I had heard, there was, you had reached out to the county. I'm just curious if there's any update on that.
So we are in communication with Mark Callahan, who is the county traffic engineer. He's done a little bit of looking, comparing this crossing to the other ones. He had some follow-up questions for me and Tom related to how many pedestrians we think are actually crossing there and what the drivers might be. We don't really have information. We've answered that, but we haven't heard anything further back from Mark. The concern there, of course, is the width and the speeds. Crosswalk may not be the best approach, but that'll really be up to them. Just for your information, we, it looks like we'll be meeting with Mark on a different matter tomorrow. And I expect the topic will come up and we'll see if there's something more definitive we can get.
Appreciate it. Then the next question I had, I I know I had been speaking with Dan Klein a little bit on the, with some concerns he had on the impact of the Webster Wetland project. I'm curious if you guys ever connected.
I left a voicemail for Mr. Klein before the last council meeting. And I've heard nothing from him since, letting him know that if he had any questions, he could give me a call and 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 I haven't heard.
Okay. I appreciate it, Rich.
Sure.
All right, let's both agenda what's after engineering. I mean, really, nothing should follow Rich. All right.
That would be bad.
Development.
Hi there. I don't know if you have any questions for me. One thing I I do want you to know, and you did bring it up earlier in the meeting, is that we have been in active discussions with Quick Trip this week. They are in crunch time trying to get the last pieces put together. Their closing is supposed to be before the end of the year, which means their final approvals need to be on the next city council meeting. So I have a conference call or Zoom call with them tomorrow to review the things that we've been waiting for for several months. So that's the update. I haven't heard anything from Quick Trip that they have canceled or delayed the project. I do not believe it is canceled in any way. Whether it may be moved to a future year, that's possible, but they have not advised me of that. I think I don't. I don't have anything else to report unless you have any questions for me.
Anyone have any questions? All right, thanks for that.
Thank you. Thanks.
Parks. Is Mark with us?
Um, yes.
There's Mark. He's with us. Mark.
There we are. Thank you. Hope everybody had a good holiday and and looking forward to the upcoming holiday season. I have a few things. We did turn in the report to the Monwattan Sioux, and they've approved our report. And hopefully on December sixteenth, they'll approve the payment of eighteen thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and send it to us for the the Woodcrest Windrose Eighth Trail there. So that's good news. Turned in the Twins grant today, and hopefully that'll be approved and we'll have that ten thousand dollars for us done. So I've been focused on that. Kevin is focused on, if you will, the swing replacement program we're implementing here as part of our playground assessments. All of those need to be upgraded, and Kevin's been working hard on that, doing a good, good job on it as well, too. He's also implementing, along with Corey, some of the assessment findings that we've got to work on for maintenance as well, too. So that's been a real plus. I think he'll have some good news for you next time about the farmer's market, at least we're hopeful. So I'll leave that hanging until he can update you on that next time. And finally, the Parks Commission meets on December the ninth and next to, next Wednesday, excuse me, and we'll be focused on goals for next year. Andrea and I are working on the skate park purchase agreement. And it looks like we pretty much have that done. So we can finish out the play of the skate park expansion over the next couple of years as well, too. So in in short, that's what we've been up to. If you've got any questions, happy to answer them.
Anyone have any questions for Mark?
I was just curious, how how close is the rink to the the ball field there in Rowena? I was driving by tonight picking up food from Firehouse and just saw it. I mean, to me, and maybe my kid will never play there again, but I'm going to teach him to push it to right field because it it looks close, at least from driving past it.
Well, first of all, it is T-ball primarily. So if they hit it that far, it'll be like what we're dealing with now with the Elko Express's foul balls hitting historic Elko Park. If they hit it that far, they're clearly destined for for stardom. And for the, so it does look a little close, but it should be far enough, I think, so it shouldn't be a problem. And I wanted to, thanks for reminding me anyway. Thanks to Corey and the guys there, they do not, they have done a terrific job on that field there. The neighbors seem pleased with it. Got a few things to finish out. But the report I sent in had a beautiful Field of Dreams picture at sunset with that stone wall there for people to sit on during the games. I think it's just, it's just very unique there as well, too. So the Twins are real happy about what we've done with that as well. And it looks like we'll have the skating rink, at least maybe with or without lights, but we'll have that open as well as Rowena this winter, too. So in answer to your question, yes, it looks a little close. Rich can probably answer that better than I can. But if they hit it that far, you know, God bless them. Let's say that they're 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 really good, they're good ball players.
We'll build them a statue outside the park.
We knew it was close, but it's also informal in T-ball. So decided to take the lesser of two evils and have the hockey rink there as well.
It was like my, my kid's only three or my my last one, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn him into a lefty or a switch hitter or be able to push the ball. That's all I'm saying. Watch out, that statue calling. I'm gonna hold you to it. I'll find this recording later on.
Beautiful. I I would be happy to come back and and watch a switch hitter hit there. Particularly, and we need a lot of lefties. That's if you're gonna, if you're gonna raise your kid to be a baseball player, a lefty's be a good one.
All right. Any other questions for Mark? All right, Mark, appreciate it. C C E C.
Linda, you want to take that or do you want me to do it?
Um, Mark, we didn't have a meeting. I reported it at the last city council meeting, so there's nothing to report with C C E C. Our next meeting is in January.
Cool. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
All right. Other committee reports, Legislative Policy Committee updates. There much, I don't think we're, there's anything there at this time.
No, we're done with those for the year, Mr. Mayor.
So on the scale, that meeting is tomorrow, so I'll have a report at the next meeting. Service delivery.
I don't have anything new to report, Mr. Mayor.
Then Unified Transit Committee.
Uh, we.
We don't have any, sorry, go on.
The Unified Transit, I'll see, or Unified Transit Plan. We had a meeting last month where they went over a few of the chapters. They're still kind of reviewing the draft of the document. That's the process that we're in right now. I don't have anything of great note. I do have to note that our neighbors within the county are good at raising questions about the future of transit to the Elko New Market area before I need to ask the question. Although it's very clear that we don't have the market to be able to do that. Plus, of course, one of the major funding items, as the council knows, is Transit Taxing District, of which we are not within. So I do think it's out of it, but transit has a long planning cycle. So I think our involvement in the planning process right now, we're basically planning for a decade out.
Yeah. Speaking of M B T A.
Next meeting is on the sixteenth, so I've got nothing for you.
I thirty-five.
Uh, next meeting is next week, and I think I sent an update via email. So I don't know if you guys went over that from the meeting in November or not.
I had forwarded out, council member Burr, there was no discussion.
Chamber of Commerce, Bryce, are you on?
Bryce is not on tonight.
Okay, so, well, I mean, the chamber, we did approve the tree lighting piece, which will be a chamber event on for this, excuse me, for the Saturday. Leave at six to eight over by Firehouse. I will be there freezing my butt off, saying hi to people as well. So hopefully, hopefully we see some friendly faces. Well, I think presentations, proclamations, acknowledgements, we have to wait until seven, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. We had to post or date and time for the TNT meeting quite a while ago. And so we anticipated that it would be at the beginning of our business meeting, which is normally held at seven o'clock. So at this point, I would suggest that we do a council discussion. And after that, recess the meeting until seven o'clock, at which time we can resume and go into the TNT presentation.
Yep, sounds like a plan. Anyone have anything for discussion by council? Okay. So let's recess the meeting from now till seven o'clock and then resume. Oh, we're resuming the meeting at seven, seven o'clock. And we have, we have a presentation, however. I think I was told Commissioner Wolf is on.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Commissioner Wolf, are you, were you looking to speak at all or were you, were you just tuning in for truth and taxation?
Oh, thank you, still trying to connect.
I want to just give him another minute, in case he did want to. And Rich, do you have a joke while we're waiting?
I want to hear an update on the helicopter pad. I would like maybe one of those in Elko.
Really? Like on top of City Hall. I don't know, I think the old PD might be a good spot.
Hey. Now you're talking.
Yeah, we can do that. How much does a helicopter cost? Like, how much, like, if the police department needed a helicopter? How much are we looking, Brady?
Easily two, two mil for a cheap, used one. And more depending upon what you're looking at. I think the state patrol is the only heli, law enforcement helicopter in Minnesota. So they have.
Oh, really?
I believe two. I think one's up north and one's here in Flying Cloud in Eden Prairie. It's all about drones now.
I suppose it is.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Wolf does not appear to be hooking up for audio purposes.
Okay. Well, let's just delve right into truth and taxation. Let's do this.
So the truth and taxation process was required by statute a number of years ago. It used to be a formal hearing. It's been changed to an informational meeting, to be honest, because most cities did not have anybody show up as exhibited by tonight. But it does provide an opportunity for citizens to come and receive information about the budget, the council decisions that were made to drive that budget and therefore the impact on their property taxes. So the intent would be tonight, somebody would come, we'd give much of the information that we've provided previously, and they would be able to ask questions such as the little guy next to Josh, who I'm sure has lots of questions related to to the budget. The idea is to provide for more transparency. I think the discussions at the time was not all cities provide as much information through regular and make it as accessible as, for instance, we do. Since we don't have anybody here from the public tonight that's indicated an interest in it, I believe we still have an obligation to provide information related to the budget, but we can do a much condensed version from the forty-six slide full presentation that we would give under normal circumstances. If the council's okay with that, I can provide the abbreviated version.
I think that's a great plan.
Okay. If the council will give me one second here. Now, a lot of this will be, oh, so I'm gonna go through this the hard way. The council is very familiar with these slides. We use them regularly in our budget discussions, so I'll move through them very quickly. What is the budget? Basically, it identifies revenues, expenditures that we expect as a city. It serves as the basis for determining our levy, our rates and our fees that we charge. It's a tool for implementing the council policy, vision and goals, and allocates finite resources for public improvements and purchases, programs and public services. And it's a direction to staff with regards to how we should be carrying out our duties. The levy is the total amount of property taxes the city collects for its general operations, capital expenditures and debt. And there are a number of factors which impact the city's finances going forward, many of which are not within the city's direct control. But they do impact the decisions that we do need to make with regards to the budget. Our budget process actually starts in May, early May, with the development of the draft budgets that were sent out to the various department heads. It then progresses normally into vision goals and workshops typically in June or early July. And then, as we work through the fall, after we've adopted the preliminary levy in September, we work on refining the utility budgets, our projected budgets, and continue to refine the budget till we get to December. We're typically in the first meeting in December, the one we're at tonight. We'll make any final changes for adoption in mid-December. Council will note that this schedule is a little bit later than the one that I described, and our vision and goals came after the budget goals and priority. You recall, we wanted to meet face to face for the vision and goal sessions, and so we kept pushing it, and that just didn't happen because of the COVID situation. And we also pushed, the budget got pushed a little bit additionally because of that as well. However, we did get to where we needed to be with regards to budget adoption at this time of year. I will move quickly through the budget and goals. These have been adopted by the council earlier this year and serve as a basis for making budgetary decisions. There were some major items that kind of drove the budget. The three biggest ones were continued implementation of the three fund deficit reduction plan. We are taking on additional debt levy for recent capital projects and purchases and the police officer physician that was discussed earlier tonight. Couple of tax, information on the tax impact parameters, the council is well versed in it at this point. But one percent tax impact is equivalent to about twelve dollars per year for the typical home. But one percent tax impact is equivalent to about twelve dollars per year for the typical home. A one percent levy increase is equivalent to a little under twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the change in the CPI from the first half in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty is one point three. This relates back to information that I typically provide in the full presentation where it takes a historical look at Consumer Price Index, which is an indicator of the increased cost of things or inflation. Um, and how our levy over that time and our spending over that time has changed. Um, I'll go, I'll quickly move past the charts, this just provides a breakdown with regards to our revenues. As the council's aware, roughly three quarters of our revenues comes from property taxes, so it's by far and away our primary revenue source. Other big ones are charges for services. Uh, that is, that is primarily made up of the charges that we charge the townships for fire district services. And then the next one, of course, is state general purpose aid, which would basically be LGA. And, uh, state aid for the fire department, state aid for the police department. On the expenditure side, uh, public safety, um, now makes up, um, a little over forty percent of our expenditures. So that would be police and fire. General government is twenty percent. If you go back several years, you'll see that general government at one point made up about forty percent of our public safety as we've seen growth in these other areas, um, in other departments over time. Uh, this has shrunk and I've advised council that there's a certain minimum infrastructure you need to run the city. But as we expand other services, general government would shrink in proportion and it has over time. Um, levy overview, when we adopted the preliminary budget, um, we were looking at a total levy of two point one eight million dollars, um, or a six point nine one percent increase from the previous year. As you can see, that was primarily being driven, um, by changes, uh, in a total dollar amount, primarily in the general fund um, and in bonded debt. Uh, general fund, to a large degree, was additional police officer. And just quite honestly, the accumulation of a large number of small items. And then under bonded debt, um, was increased debt service that we were taking out for the three D team fund and also for some of the capital projects and purchases, uh, that we've made, uh, going forward, like the twenty nineteen uh, payment rehab, the roundabout project, the plow trucks, et cetera. The final draft of the budget, um, reduces that total levy by point two, a little over point two percent. We're looking at a six point five percent levy increase, um, but the same drivers, uh, within the budget as to what's driving that levy increase. If you take a look over time with regards to our adopted final levies, those have increased, um, over time. But that is relative to our overall budget, but also is somewhat reflective of our growth as a community. If we had given the full presentation and the council's seen that historical data, you'll see that our overall um, levy per capita, um, or impact on the typical family home has been relatively stable, um, over time. And that's kind of a result of, of growth in the community, both the population, um, and number of households over time. The estimated tax impact, uh, we use, we do talk about levy, uh, we, and we, because it's the nominal number that we need to charge. But that is, that in and by itself doesn't take into account growth of the community or the needs of community. We also will identify tax rate, but I hate to use that because you back into that based on your size of your tax base and the amount of your levy. And I think talking about your tax rate going up or down can be misleading. It can happen where you can actually have a larger levy, but your tax rate can go down. Um, because you need a lower, charge a lower percentage of the value of properties if your property values are going up to recover the same amount of dollars. Um, if we take a look at our tax pack, the tax impact and the preliminary budget, the typical home was looking at a five point six percent um, tax impact with the, uh, more recent adjustments we've made with regards to assumed, um, development activity that's been reduced to five point two percent. Couple of things to point out is that, uh, when we talk the typical home, we're talking the average, the average price home with the average appreciation. Um, there's an infinite number of combinations, so it is generalized some degree. We should point out that sixteen percent of homes experienced an increase in assessed value greater than the typical home. And approximately, almost twenty percent experienced a decrease in the assessed value, um, which was less than the typical home. And the weighted average, when you put all that together, is five point two three percent, very similar to what it is for the average home. And that's because we've seen a banding, a tighter banding of the amount of appreciation that we've seen and depreciation that we've seen in homes within the community. Um, as the council's aware, and as you get, me get approached by the public with regards to, hey, my taxes went up. And I'll be honest, we have not had a lot of calls, I actually know calls that I'm aware of at City Hall where we've had inquiries related to, um, people's property taxes changing once they receive their, um, estimated tax impact. And this is based off the preliminary budget. But if you do receive, uh, questions directly, the first couple of things that you need to point out or ask them to take a look at is their change in valuation. If that change in valuation is greater than the average appreciation for, let's say, a home, there's gonna be a greater shift in the tax burden, um, to them. The other thing to point out is that the city itself only makes up roughly a third of the overall property taxes on any particular property. So the taxes may go up, they may have gone up disproportionately relative to their appreciation. But it might be because of the levies from other taxing districts, which include the county, soil and water district, um, the metropolitan mosquito control district, uh, school districts, et cetera, and make that up. Any questions? Was that abbreviated enough?
That was great. I don't have any questions. Uh, Don, I think has lots of questions. I saw her taking notes. No, you sure? Does anyone have any questions at all? In that case, I appreciate it, Tom.
Thank you.
We could, uh, if anyone wants to adjourn, we could probably go ahead and do that.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Don? Second by Josh.
Motion to adjourn.
All, although I. Amanda, you vote. Amanda might be frozen. Don, you go ahead.
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Amanda, are you, you with us?
It looks like she's frozen at the moment, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we have three votes to adjourn, so let's just go ahead and do it. You need to adjourn. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.